Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. Before I start, somebody asked me, "Why would I make Marvin the Vice Mayor?"
It's not funny, he's smart.
I figured nobody'd shoot me if I made Marvin Vice Mayor. So far, it's worked out. All right. City Clerk.
Is that how you got to be Vice Mayor?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Krist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Pastor John Metters from the Christian Life Assembly.
If I may make a couple of comments before I pray, I want to thank the city. Yeah, Marvin, I want to thank the city. Recently, the city repaved the street in front of our church and just did an excellent job. And we had some concerns with access to the church and the city workers, they worked with us very well, especially in the Plan Department, the Public Works Department, and I really commend the staff of the city for doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Amen. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you that we're able to come to you this evening, and I pray your blessing upon this council meeting. Lord, my heart also goes to all those affected by the natural disasters that have occurred around the world recently. Pray for those in Mexico and the Caribbean. Father, the fires up in Montana, the monsoons in Southeast Asia, Lord, that you would just protect life and help the recovery to go quickly in all these areas, Lord, and also Houston. And Father, I pray that you would continue to protect our city as well. Father, I thank you for our public servants who serve us so well. I pray your blessing and protection upon them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Want to do the pledge?
Sure. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. We have some presentations tonight.
Take what?
Take Raj down there with you. Raj.
As long as you're relaxed.
Might as well cop to it, right?
This is Linda Lawson. Linda Lawson was in the third grade with me. But I want you to know, the reason I remember that is because how mean she was to me.
Oh. That was Roxanne.
I know, but I have a distinct recollection of you and Roxanne laughing about me not cutting my fingernails. And every time I've got to cut my fingernails, I've thought of them for sixty-some years. Okay.
Let me see.
Fifty-five years. How the world turns.
You had red hair, too.
That's right. That's right.
Why still have it?
Sort of. Tonight, in keeping with our ongoing celebration of the city's fortieth anniversary, we are recognizing another praiseworthy recipient of our Community Contributor Award. Each recipient has been chosen for his or her work within the Lancaster community and for taking the initiative to create positive change throughout the city. I'm pleased to recognize tonight's honoree, who is an important member of Lancaster's healthcare community and whose leadership and dedication has helped improve the overall health and wellness of Lancaster residents. And we have a video.
You know what excites me is coming into the building and seeing the patients. I know we give excellent care here, we take care of our members probably far better than I've ever experienced in my healthcare career.
What do you miss about the LBN days, the frontline days?
I graduated from Palmdale High School in 1970, and I wasn't sure I wanted to go into nursing or even be involved in healthcare. And I was looking through the Antelope Valley College schedule of classes, and I saw, oh, license vocational nurse, I can do that, and realized I needed to become an RN, a registered nurse. Moved out of Lancaster for a short while, came back into the Emergency Department at Antelope Valley Hospital, where my career really took off over the years. We're very metric-heavy in Kaiser Permanente. We evaluate acuity levels, what kind of diseases they have, but I want to also mention Kaiser is into wellness care and not sick care. We try to understand how to make our members healthy, keep them well. We make sure they get their healthcare screenings, and we're a little bit different than just a regular doctor's office where you go if you're sick or you need some kind of a treatment or surgery. We really oversee the population of health more acutely.
Could you tell me about this beautiful building?
Yes, this beautiful building was designed years ago, and it probably came to fruition in 2012 as an approval. And then we actually took two years to build the building, and it's now open for our specialty care. We do our orthopedics, we do all of our surgical services, our oncology services. It houses all the specialty care for Kaiser Permanente.
Linda's always approachable. When you talk to her, you kind of feel like you're talking to someone you've known for a long time. She's always just engaged in the conversation. You never feel like she wears a title or holds a position. And she forces us to always remember to put the patient in the middle. So when we're having discussions about the business side of things or focused in on dollars or workflows, she always says, "Well, what about the patients?" This is a well-deserved recognition for her, probably a long time coming, and we all just hope to be a little bit like her.
What are you most passionate about?
Patient care, absolutely. We have a philosophy here in Kaiser, in Lancaster, in Palmdale, the patient comes first. I have about 1,000 staff members, and we have about 130 physicians, all within Kaiser and Antelope Valley to take care of 130,000 members, but the patient is always in the center of that care.
Linda was at AV Hospital, and I remember being in a meeting where probably the most scandalous thing I'd ever seen or heard of was being kept secret. And she was in the meeting, and I just started asking her questions, and she didn't hesitate. I mean, was absolutely honest. And some of the perpetrators were at that table. And it was one of, it's an experience I'll never forget, to see that level of courage, where transparency really meant something. And she was unafraid. And from that, she was recruited, well, not from that, but after that, she was recruited by Kaiser. And, you know, we always think of the doctors running that place. That is not true. Nor did they design it. The person who had more influence in that, in every phase of it, was you. And look what she accomplished. Wow. That, I mean, that's our signature building now, and you will never get credit for it, except from us.
Thank you.
That's very nice, thank you.
Linda Lawson has served our community for many years in various roles, beginning as a registered nurse at Antelope Valley Hospital, where she eventually rose to the position of Vice President of Patient Care Services. Presently, Linda serves as Chief Administrative Officer of Kaiser Permanente Antelope Valley Hospital, where she works to uphold and better the relationships between numerous healthcare entities throughout our region for the benefit of all who live here. Proof of her devotion to her community goes far beyond health and wellness and encompasses the education of our future leaders. Linda previously served as a board member of both the Antelope Valley College Foundation and the local YMCA. She has worked much of her life in Antelope Valley to improve the quality of our life for our residents. Tonight, I am proud to recognize Linda Lawson for the tireless work she's done and continues to do here in the city of Lancaster, and name her as our newest Community Contributor. I have an award. Do we have a, somebody's going to help me with that, I hope? Okay. I can carry this. Raj, over here. I'm trying to, this is the picture that goes in the paper?
Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, you get to keep the statue.
Yeah, I'll keep that. Okay, thank you.
We'll put it back a little bit.
Thank you for your partnership here. Thank you.
You gotta give her the award. The check, the check call? Oh, wait a minute, you gotta give it back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So this is going to the Antelope Valley College Foundation, Scholarship Foundation for the kids for the college.
You really are one of the bravest people I know. I mean that absolutely sincerely.
Yeah, I hope I can receive.
Why wouldn't you want to see me in court? I want to introduce our newest Deputy Mayor, and in a moment, I will. But one of the reasons we have Deputy Mayors is because of the vision all of us have for what we're doing here. Many city councils, I think, view their job as to help manage the city day-to-day, make sure that the potholes someday get fixed. I know, you know, we could be better at that. And just the day-to-day operations. We're a little different than that. What we are attempting to accomplish is to build a city that has never been seen before, where more of the community truly is part of it and is engaged in growing it in ways we don't even know where it's going to end, but we know it's going to be magnificent, because we're seeing signs of it. You know, a few years ago, we had 24% unemployment. We're now down to four. We will soon be at three. We don't want to go any lower than that, because then you have labor shortages, and, you know, it creates problems of its own. I didn't know that, but the city manager tells me this stuff, that don't go below that, for some whatever reason. But I want to, we want to do it in a way that doesn't repeat the past mistakes. If you're going to build a 21st century city, you have to make certain the foundation gets laid first. And when I'm telling my wife all these dreams, you know, and describing what I think it's going to be like, she'll go, "Yeah, who's going to do that?" You know, she has this way of just bringing me back, you know? If you don't have the workforce, if you don't have the skilled people to do the job, how do you expect them to build something totally different that they've never seen before? So what we've done is we found Marvin. Marvin Kropke is going to be the next Deputy Mayor. Come up here. I bet you guys didn't know this, I'm taking CA-1 out of work.
Yes, you are, thank you.
That's all I had to do, huh? Okay. Were you going to do the?
I can do it.
I might as well do it now. Is it all on here?
Most of it, but the bios will.
Okay, why don't you explain to everybody who Marvin is? It's an honor to read Mr. Kropke's bio. Very impressive. Born in Chicago, Illinois, Marvin Kropke grew up 20 miles east of Los Angeles in Pico Rivera, California. After graduating from El Rancho High School, he worked as a lineman for General Telephone and Electronics, GTE. He was a member of Communication Workers of America. He was also a member of United Auto Workers Union while working at the Ford Motor Company Plant in Pico Rivera. Drafted into the US Army, Marvin was assigned to the infantry. He achieved the rank of Sergeant in the 4th Infantry Division and is a recipient of the Purple Heart for Wounds Received in Combat in Vietnam. Thank you for your service, sir. Marvin is an electrician by trade and a 38-year member of IBW Local Union 11. He has been eight times elected the Principal Officer of Local 11. He has served as Business Manager since 1997. Marvin has been married to fellow El Rancho student Nancy Fulton for 49 years, and they now reside in Brea, California. That deserves a clap there. Not the Brea part, the 49 years. Daughters Carrie and Jennifer are an educator and lawyer in the local area. The Kropkes have four grandchildren, Mr. Marvin Kropke. So why is he the, why is he the next Deputy Mayor? It's because what he brings to the table is, we can start training and developing qualified workforce that are journeymen, that'll have jobs the rest of their life. As long as they want to do the job, they'll have a job, because they're going to be highly skilled. And I can't think of anyone better to serve in that capacity with the city, to make certain that we establish that foundation early now. Because, folks, we've got a growth boom coming that is going to knock your socks off. In the next year, it's going to start, and it's not going to let up for 15 years minimum. We're going to have a housing cycle like we've never seen before. Now, we can do it the way we always did it in the past, with, you know, I bought a brand-new house, and I could, first winter, I could feel the wind blowing through the wall. It was that poorly constructed. Or we can have great construction with a great workforce doing it, but it's not going to happen unless we start making the moves now. And that is what Marvin's going to do as the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute, I got to get a vote.
Yep. I'll second your nomination.
Let's vote, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
You're the new Deputy Mayor. I got to swear to you. That means if you want a job in Lancaster, call Marvin.
Rex, can I make a suggestion? Can the fellow IBW people come down? It'd be a great picture with all of them.
You want to be in the picture? Come on down. Wait a minute, share your ID. I've already scabs in that picture.
No, 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 good men, good men and women. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Marvin.
I guess you can see what this really is, is it's announcing a partnership with Labor that no other city has. And it's never been tried before, and I think it's going to have amazing results. Right? And here, I thought you were all here to see me. I thought I was getting popular, you know?
Not as popular as Marvin.
Now I'm more popular. Okay, ready?
Yes.
I, Marvin Kropke.
Marvin Kropke.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Of evasion.
Evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Need you to sign right there. And I think we should have Mrs. Kropke come up and get a picture. You got your speech ready? Okay. Let's get one picture.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to thank our good mayor, our great mayor, truly a visionary, and our good council members and all the administration of this great city, and it is a great city. Thank you to our good members who have driven over here after work. I very much appreciate you all. I just wanted to say that in looking at our relationship, some of you may say, "Well, what is the value added?" So when we have projects in this great city, in the surrounding Antelope Valley area, we take these young men and young women into our trade. We presently have 1,700 apprentices in our trade. That's the largest apprenticeship program electrically in the country. The first day they come in, we put them in a job. The first day they come in, we put them in school. We train them for five years. It never costs them one penny during apprenticeship due to these good people behind you, these brothers and sisters. They pay for all the apprenticeship training. So we take a person in, but we don't take them in for a project. After they work on this project, then we assign them to other building projects all around, maybe in this area, or maybe all around Los Angeles County, for a career. And it's not just a job, it's a career. And our members earn good wages, they have outstanding health plans, there's never any issue of coverage for our members when they go to a medical facility, they have outstanding medical coverage when they retire, they have a pension that is excellent. Everything always could be better, I understand that, but it's a good pension. So they work hard, they are very skilled, they work in a very dangerous craft, but I want to say that we so much appreciate our partnership with this great city, and when we enter into agreements where we have community benefits, remember that both parties are going to invest so much in those persons that we bring in, and that's what we're most proud of, that we'll take a resident. We outreach to all the communities that we are in. We have a huge recruitment program among veterans coming back from Afghanistan and Iraq. We say reserve 50% of the slots in our apprenticeship for these young people coming back, and we have many programs, we outreach into all the communities of Los Angeles County, communities of color, women, you name it, we do those things in this local union. We're very representative of the communities that we live in, and we're proud of it. So, great mayor, thank you so much to you. Honorable council members, thank you so much to, I am deeply honored, but I accept this only on behalf of these good members we have behind us. Thank you so much tonight.
Hey Raj, did you see how Linda Lawson looked so young down there? What happened to Rex?
I can't believe he's been this way for a couple of weeks now.
You know, I got feelings. Oh, can I still say that I want to move item CA-2?
You already did.
I only said one.
Taking that order.
You could say it again if you'd like. Well, I meant to say it. Okay, now we have the, wow.
You're taking this out of order, too, so.
Yeah, taking CA-2 out of order.
Taking CA-2 out of order?
Yeah.
So do I got to read everybody's name, or does the agenda work?
The nominations can be referenced as listed on the agenda.
Okay, good. Referencing the nominations on the agenda, do I, these are my nominations for those various committees and commissions.
Oh, second that motion.
And any discussion?
We have a speaker card, I believe.
Oh, Fran, come on up.
Thank you.
Now, some of these people I forgot to call and ask. Donna, will you be on the committee?
I just put the message in my ear. Yes, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. I forgot.
That's okay.
I was busy. Good.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I read over the names, and most of them I know, and they're all good people. And, but, I'm going to say something on my behalf. I was a little disappointed that I didn't get one of the commissions, and I wanted to know why I, what does it take to be qualified? Because I had applied for the Homeless Impact Commission and the Healthy Community Commission, and I was just wondering, what am I missing so I can study up or do what I have to do?
Fran, you're absolutely right. You absolutely should be on a commission. You absolutely have demonstrated your, I don't know the word to use, you know, certainly not devotion, but it certainly is your love for the city, right? And I will correct that next meeting.
Thank you.
Fair enough?
Thank you.
And I apologize to you.
Thank you very, very much. God bless you.
And it was Marvin's, and it was Marvin's fault.
Marvin, I saw you this morning.
What?
I was shaking in my boots. I wasn't too sure if I should say something, but something in my heart told me I should say something, because I do love the city, and I do a lot, you know, on my own, and I try to do the best for our community and for our seniors, and for other people, too, not just the senior. And I thank you very much.
And it took incredible courage to come up there and ask.
Thank you.
Really seriously.
Thank you.
I love you, Fran.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, we had a motion in a second. I don't think you voted.
Oh.
Had a call for the vote.
Let's vote.
This is not the minutes. This is the commission.
This is the commission.
This is the commission.
Let's vote. And they're approved unanimously. The new commission that we have there is the Lancaster Homeless Impact Commission. And we've also formed a group that is going to be attacking the homeless issue. The deputy mayor, Daryl Doris, is leading that. You're going to see some great things happening. And you're going to see them quickly, where people are going to be given the opportunity to have real housing for as long as they need it. It's not going to be a bed, you know, a cot for eight hours a night. It's going to be a real, supported housing, and I'm looking forward to it. So don't screw it up, Daryl. All right. Now, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve M1.
I abstained from the minutes.
All in favor?
I wasn't here for the last meeting.
And just why did you miss?
I was under the weather.
Did you have a note?
I should have. I should have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously.
No, she abstained.
Oh, with one abstention. That's right. You told me that, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay. Any items on the consent calendar you want to pull?
Yeah, we need to pull CC7.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised, pulling CC7.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, approved. CC7, municipal election. Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves, you're not planning to run, are you?
Good evening. You know, the school districts have changed their districts, changed into districts, and they're going to have elections in November even years. College will be districted and vote in November. Palmdale is districted and votes in November. So the question is, why can't Lancaster be districted and vote in November? More people vote. More people will have a chance to say what they want. And I don't understand why we stay with the spring elections.
Michael, can you tell me who ran for a judge position in the last election?
Well, I ran for city council.
I know, but can you tell me who ran for a judge?
Well, Alicia Molina ran for superior court judge and got a million votes.
Locally?
Yes, I can remember somebody that ran.
That's the reason why. We're trying to maintain our own independence.
But the thing is, Marvin, that you want to have a democracy where more people vote than you do now. Hardly anybody votes in the spring, and you know that, and I know that. The idea is, it's not to kick you guys out, it's to have more democracy. And if you have more democracy, people will not be so disenchanted. So give me... That's one reason. I just... I think it would be so much better if we were districted in apparel, like I said, in perpendicular districts, just lines, lines, lines. Our city is so diverse that if you districted it from the west to the east side, I'm sure it would be equalized. And you would have all these... Instead of like Palmdale, you would have all these districts where people would know where they are in the district. Why don't we simplify it? Simplify it, perpendicular districts, November elections, and we will be in good shape. That's... You know, you guys are the... You were elected by the people I work. You'll make the decision. This is just my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve CC7.
I will second that.
Let's vote. And it's approved unanimously. Public hearing item number one.
Need to open.
Need to open the public hearing.
Have any cards?
No cards.
Okay, let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
No, we got to close.
Close the public.
Oh, close the public. Public hearing now closed.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1034 and adopt resolution number 17-43.
I'll second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Do you think if I do this another nine years, I'll figure out how to do it?
No.
You know, when you think about it, you've got a reason for saying that. Public hearing item number two. The public hearing is now open.
No speaker cards. It's her birthday.
No presentation would be a lovely present.
Jocelyn, it's your birthday? It's your birthday?
Yes.
Should we sing "Happy Birthday"?
I think we should.
Up to you, John. To you. Happy birthday, dear Jocelyn. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Crist.
We're going to waive the presentation.
Bless your hearts.
Because it's your birthday.
Thank you very much.
Except Lee, he's got to give his. No.
That works for me. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion? Oh, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we introduce ordinance number 1035, adding that the time frame be 72 hours.
Second that.
And adopt resolution number 17-44.
Second that. Let's vote. And it's unanimous. New business, Community Homeless Initiative update. Any cards?
And no cards.
No cards.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and city council members. On February 9, 2016, the Los Angeles Chief Executive Office presented to the Board of Supervisors for approval the Los Angeles County Homeless Initiative with approved strategies to combat homelessness. On March 7, 2017, a sales tax increase measure to fund homeless services and prevention was approved by the Los Angeles County voters in favor of authorizing 0.025% county sales tax increase for 10 years in order to fund homeless services and prevention. On June 13, 2017, on a unanimous vote, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors accepted virtually all of the recommendations of a 50-member planning committee on how to divide the money pursuant to the approved strategies to combat homelessness. The Los Angeles County Homeless Initiative is comprised of six detailed strategies outlining the recommendation, lead agency, description, populations targeted, potential performance metrics, funding, and connections to cities. Following are the six strategies: prevent homelessness, create a coordinated system, increase income, provide case management and services, subsidize housing, and increase affordable housing and housing for the homeless. The city is already implementing strategies mentioned. The city of Lancaster is taking an aggressive stance on the prevention of homelessness by providing affordable workforce housing. At the direction of the mayor and city council members, several affordable housing projects are in process, have obtained approval from the Architectural Design Commission, and are being submitted to planning for submission to the Planning Commission. The developments have a unique layout providing pedestrian pathways, bikeways, and encouraging neighborhood participation. Also, the city of Lancaster has projects that are in process of providing housing for homeless individuals and families with wraparound services in place. At the direction of the mayor and city council, there is a new project that is currently in competing for funding from several sources to construct housing for homeless with wraparound services in one location. The primary impediment to providing both affordable and homeless housing is the combination of land use policy and regulatory barriers. The city of Lancaster has already approved ordinances and is in the process of creating additional ordinances going before the Planning Commission for approval in the very near future to reduce regulatory barriers for affordable housing. Incentive zoning/value capture strategies are being approved as part of the approval of the tentative tract maps. The city has approved... has an approved ordinance for accessory dwelling units, and the city is in compliance with SB2 zoning for homeless and affordable housing projects. One critical element that has been missing to ending homelessness is the ability for all cities within the county of Los Angeles to be able to access data on all of the homeless and provide them wraparound services utilizing all available social service providers. On January 23, 2017, HUD published a notice establishing additional requirements for continuum of care for the development and implementation of a coordinated entry system. The CES module enables the social service providers to work together to direct the homeless to the most appropriate services. Instead of cities and agencies working in silos, they will have access to one database where information is shared throughout the county, which supports the strategy to create a coordinated system. The coordination will eliminate the domination of social service providers in communities, allowing all social service providers within the county of Los Angeles to provide wraparound services and combat homelessness. TOEY will continue by providing additional information on what else the city is doing regarding homelessness in this community of Lancaster.
Thank you, Liz. Mayor and council, to complement what Liz has provided and kind of bring us full circle from the background and the exciting projects that she's mentioned, one which is very exciting, Mayor, and I'm probably sure that you will talk about that a little more, it's my pleasure to share with you kind of what we are doing right here and now in Lancaster. As you know, there are many paths into homelessness, and a logical response, there must be many paths out of it to address it, prevent it, and combat it. Recognizing we can not only build our way out of homelessness, but equally important, as Liz mentioned, is to identify the root causes and provide services accordingly. As such, the city of Lancaster is taking a multifaceted approach to respond. I describe our approach as a large highway with many lanes headed to a final destination, which some of those highway lanes are before you tonight for your consideration as part of the agenda. As you know, on August 1, Supervisor Barker introduced a motion for the creation of an Antelope Valley Homeless Consortium, made up of 19 members represented from the community with various aspects and perspectives on the issue. The charge of the consortium is to work with a consultant, engage the community, and conduct a gap analysis with an end goal being a final report of recommendations for the Antelope Valley to address the homeless crisis. Since the inception, Mayor, you made it very clear that you were in support of Supervisor's efforts, and I assure you that staff have been actively participating with the Antelope Valley Homeless Consortium. To date, there have been two consortium meetings that I will say have been very well attended by the community. Actually, I've been pleasantly surprised by the community engagement and the great... the cooperative workings that all Valley residents have had together. The next consortium meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 2 and October 16. The process for the consortium will culminate with a final report being presented to the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, October 31. As Liz mentioned, on June 13, the County Board of Supervisors approved the Measure H funding recommendations. In addition to those funding recommendations, the board allocated from the general fund $2 million to support cities' COGS and their planning efforts in recognition that cities play a vital role in preventing and combating homelessness. As such, an RFP was released, and based on Lancaster's 2017 homeless count of 642, Lancaster was eligible for $70,000 grant, to which we did apply and are optimistic in receiving. On the heels of the consortium process and findings, the grant would assist us in preparing our own planning grant to... our own plan, I'm sorry, to combat homelessness in Lancaster. Ideally, the city would engage in a more robust community process with an expert professional, beginning with great internal discussions, because one of the things that we know is that homelessness impacts many of the departments in the organization, recognizing that we also need to further the engagement with not only the residents, but also the business community. As well and timely, the process would involve the newly established Homeless Impact Commission, who I am certain is eager and ready to work with us. Thanks. Thank you, Donna. In addition, the ultimate goal would be a homeless plan that would serve as a roadmap for the city of Lancaster. And in continuing, in addition, with the timeliness while working on the city plan to identify the service and program needs, we will also be, pending approval tonight, working to create a community hub via the new Lancaster... via a new Lancaster community center. As we all know, the Lancaster Community Shelter closed its doors last month, which was not an exciting time, but what is exciting is the vision of the mayor to open the doors with greater impact and purpose. The repurposing of the community shelter to a community center allows for a greater community participation and impact. The center will certainly be an integral part of the city's homeless plan through its service and program offerings. While in the beginning stages, I can share it's been a pleasure thus far to work with Deputy Doris and the faith-based community leaders to walk through the center and hear their concepts. Their imagination and enthusiasm is contagious, and I look forward to working with them. In conclusion, Mayor, we know how important this is, this issue is to you and the city council as well as the community, and we recognize all the time you and Vice Mayor Crist has spent on it, looking to ensure that not only does Lancaster get its fair share, but that we do what we need to in order to take care of Lancaster. Please know that staff joins you in the demand for greater service offerings and delivery and are working to research and capture all opportunities available. Tomorrow, we will be attending the Second Summit to Combat Homelessness, as well as meeting with the Department of Director Services Housing for Health Director to share some of those further opportunities. The way I describe it, it's a perfect storm of opportunities happening, that if you view and package them properly, they present a great amount of achievable excess in preventing and combating homelessness. In summary, I would say we are thinking globally, participating regionally, and acting locally. This concludes my update. Liz and I are available for any questions you may have.
Questions? What are we doing to work with the county and the city of Palmdale in this area, which was Spa One?
Yes. The Antelope Valley Consortium is comprised of the city of Lancaster, the city of Palmdale, as well as the county. Yesterday, we had a separate meeting that involved the cities, and one of the things that I'd be honest with, we identified was that we recognize the increase in the homeless population. Most of it happened in the unincorporated areas, and so one of the things that we are discussing now with the Homeless Initiative Director is having someone from the county to play more of a on-hands role like you would have Liz and myself, so that when the conversations occur, they're not occurring from... at such a level that is not going to be impactful on the ground.
So your numbers were the 600?
642.
642, and what was the city of Palmdale's?
Well, I just recently learned that the city of Palmdale's were changed. There was apparently an inaccuracy in reporting, and so right now, what is reported on the LASSA website is 342.
And they changed it from what?
It was... It was 992 before.
Okay, in the county?
Oh.
Well, the balance, yeah, the balance is... Four thousand and something, the balance of that is in the county. So, there's more homeless in the county than there is in the City of Lancaster and City of Palmdale combined.
It's about, it's about 3,000.
So, we got the money of 642 of the 70,000 based upon the 642?
Correct, yes.
Just for the planning grant, that's not the money.
I understand that, but are we using the other money that the county got from the 4,000 for the planning?
Donna, do you know if the county went for a planning grant? Okay. One of the things that is on the table for us is part of the $2 million, there was an allocation for council of governments, because we don't have a COG in the Antelope Valley. We are having those discussions now. There's an additional $30,000 on the table for a joint, joint discussion process, if you will, for Palmdale and Lancaster. So, those discussions are taking place now with the city staff.
Okay. That's what I wanted to find out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You're supposed to keep talking.
Did you notice how young Linda Lawson looked earlier?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Did you notice how old he looked?
She, she didn't know the difference in color.
And they were, well, they went to the same class. Do you want me to keep talking?
You know, it astonishes me, to me, always astonishes me, how quickly people forget. Now, yeah, what I'm curious about is, so you got the bulk of the homeless in the county, unless they decide to, somebody tears down their tent and they move to Lancaster. I mean, this is an extremely mobile population.
Yes, and that is something that we've articulated to the county in terms of, the homeless have and know no boundaries, if you will, when it comes to the limitations of where the cities are, and so that is why the COG, if you will, concept is there, so that the planning effort can be one of more global than specific local to the boundaries.
Just, just so everybody's clear, what we're attempting to do is, I want the city to coordinate all of the efforts within the city for dealing with the homeless. And the reason for that is because I want meaningful, long-term, in perpetuity, solutions that are created, administered, and funded. And, and so I don't want any, any mistake about what we're doing here. City, I want city staff to be involved and engaged in everything that happens within this city for the homeless. And if you're not engaged and involved in it, we're not supporting it. That's just the way it is. We're not, we're not going to fast-track anything. We're, we're, we want a viability occurring that hasn't occurred in the past. And that's not an aspersion on anybody who is doing it. They didn't have any funding. I mean, what, what did we expect, right? But now we do, and I don't want it dissipated. But I'm concerned about how the county funding is going to work. Do you know how it's going to work?
To check on it right now, because I don't know about that. What are you spending your money?
I mean, it has to be coordinated, is, is my thinking. And I want it coordinated with the staff. Now, I know there's a lot of other groups that aren't under our umbrella, and I really don't care what they do, just so long as they don't do it in Lancaster, right? Is that everybody's understanding? All right. Have I pretty much said it? What is the name of the group we had today versus the, the commission?
We have to come up with one.
Okay. Well, we tend to do that, don't we? We get people to execute, put them in a room, and forget to name them.
You can name them.
But we, we need to develop a line of authority between that group and the commission, so that it, you know, it's seamless and it's all working together.
Yes.
Okay? And we will have facilities up and running then 12 months, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Where people actually live, not spend the night.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's mine.
So, do I need to, do we need to vote on anything with this?
She wanted to speak, but it's late.
Oh, Shannon. Come on down. Remember, you're on a commission now.
Hi, so.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Chad.
Shannon McDonald, I just wanted to let you guys know, I did, I did attend the last homeless consortium. And although I did enjoy it, there were some issues I did have with it. Number one, the numbers that we just discussed, that were just discussed, I had a problem with immediately when I saw them. Hate to say this, but my ninth grader, ninth grader could have done that PowerPoint, and I just feel like there should be more emphasis on...
No, you gotta be nicer.
I'm trying, but I'm getting to the nice part. Okay, I'm one of those people that with the next 48 hours, I'll be going and actually speaking to these homeless people myself. Those people that are in tent cities on Alpha Avenue K in certain places, I actually see myself going and parking my truck somewhere and speaking to these people and seeing exactly what they need and what they want, because it seems though every, every time I, I said something, we had groups, and every time I said I, I saw a solution this way, there was always another problem with it. So, I, my, my number one thing is this, either we want to fix the homeless problem or we don't. If you want to fix it, the best thing I heard tonight was getting the community and businesses involved. Before I came here, I went to this restaurant that I'd never heard of before, and it was off of 50th and L., and I'm ashamed of myself, because it was called like Taste of Europe or some, something of that nature, and they had extremely good food. And I talked, started discussing with this man, different things, and he said, you know, I have so much bread that I have to get rid of throughout the day, you know, at the end of the day, and he said, it's not just about giving out the bread, I just wish I had somewhere to, someone to give this food to. And I sat here and thought about all these things, and I was like, well, Grace Resources, he said, well, they closed down. I said, well, they still serve food? Well, you know, I just came up with all these different, this is somebody that's not on any commission, I'm not getting paid, well, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I want to be part of the city, I want to be where you are at. So, my whole thing is like, why not?
No, no, I know that.
Okay, you guys all know that. But the point of it is, is I really, I really tried difficult, I really tried hard to make sure that he understood that, like, if you have something, let me know so that I can talk to certain people to see if, that we can do something with this food, so it doesn't go to waste. I mean, there's still people out there that need to eat. I mean, I want people to take showers more often than one day a week, so they feel better about themselves. So, I just wanted to speak on that, that I'm looking forward to going to the next one, and I hope the dialogue is, the dialogue is more intuitive of what really, really what the homeless need, and by then I will have a list of exactly what I've actually spoken to with the homeless people. They're actually on the street, what they say, we need this, not what I want, I want to hear what I, what you need. Needs and wants are different. So, I just wanted to speak on that, and thank you very much for still keeping this alive, this homeless talk. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Shannon. Of course, you know, now you're going to be sitting up here and you've got to do something about it.
No problem.
Okay. And, and actually, Shannon, I know that. Shannon, I, I know, that's why you're on, that's why you're on a commission.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. There's that. What about MB2?
No speaker cards?
Wave the staff report?
Yep. Motion to approve MB2?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. MB3, any speaker cards? Okay. Who's doing the report on that? Okay.
Mayor Perez, city council members, this is an exciting opportunity that we're bringing before you. The resolution would authorize the city manager and city attorney to enter into a lease agreement with a to-be-established nonprofit for use of the former community shelter building at, on Yucca Avenue. The reason it's exciting is because for 28 years, that building has been used by various agencies, most recently Grace Resources, to do the work of the Lord, to help people, to save lives. And there's been a lot that's happened in that building. As we all know, the homeless shelter shut down. With that are amazing opportunities that you're seeing now in the presentation we had. But one of the biggest opportunities, I think, is for that building. The opportunity to truly partner with the churches, and this mayor and this council has never shied away from partnering with the churches and other nonprofits and service providers in this community to provide services. Our city has 240 employees, the churches probably have 40,000 people between various churches, and bringing their time, treasure, and talents in will be amazing in that facility. Most churches provide lots of services that help the public, parenting classes, childcare, all at no cost to the public that government doesn't have to provide. Marying an empty facility and providing that and allowing a group of churches to lead it with other community organizations, we've been with Pastor Doris and several other pastors touring it, will allow for that facility to continue to provide as a community center for the needs of this community. The terms would be pretty straightforward, be a year lease, it could not go beyond that without us coming back to the city council as proposed to you. It would be month to month to make sure it works, and it would be a doll, for a dollar a year in recognition of the fact that there will be services provided that benefit the public. We enthusiastically recommend this to you. It's something that I want to give Mayor Perez, thank him for putting us in touch with the groups initially and giving us the order of make it work, and we believe this makes it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Cabell.
Cabell?
This is my first time here with you, and I hope that it will not be the last. So, get ready, we've got work to do out here. I'm Wendy Cabell, and I've been a resident here since 2007, primarily transitioning from place to place as a homeless person with lived experience. And I can tell you more about that later in the public comment. I did go to the Board of Supervisors this meeting at the Lancaster Library to share some concerns of mine from consumers' perspective about the AV Homeless Consortium. And one was that, I've been asking repeatedly, and I will continue to ask the question, as I will pose to you all, that there needs to be someone at the table who is currently, presently being impacted by homelessness in any type of discussion. Because when I look and see the people at the table making the decision, I want to know, what do you know about what I'm going through and what my peers are going through? And so, I've been asking that question, and I haven't gotten a satisfactory answer. And I also told the Board of Supervisors earlier that I had requested I would like to participate in that homeless consortium. I've yet to hear back, I just said that this morning. So, that being said, I would like to know, I've heard the good things that were reported recently, and I'm glad, grateful for that, and if I could be of assistance, I'd like to be a part of that as well in some form or fashion. But I was curious when I read the paper today, wondering how this conversion to this new community center would in homelessness now. Everything is about now. Great, we have a future to look forward to, but what are we, what are we doing now in place? And so, that's been my, my concern. And also, just your, your response, Mayor, previously was that we'll be seeing something in 12 months, and so I was curious about what project that is. That is, is that a guarantee in 12 months? And I'd also like to connect with the young lady that was talking about speaking with the homeless as well. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
So, why are you homeless?
Well, my homelessness began in 2004, and I was employed. And actually, I was working with a nonprofit social service agency that worked with the homeless, and things just didn't seem to work out in the end. I enjoyed what I did, but the administration was not supportive of, I guess, the way I do work. But from what I understand, there were some other issues that were going on behind the scenes anyway. So, needless to say, I should have been relieved, because it was a hostile work environment, but at the same time, I missed what I was doing. But it certainly has given me the other side now. I have now experienced that, and I've been going from place to place, trying to get help. And, and so, I represent that type of person who, number one, doesn't look like the stereotype, and that's something that I'm trying to combat as well. Being a part of now Mental Health Services, I'm also part of NAMI, so I'm also trying to bring out public awareness and education in that area as our affiliate out here, and it's just, it's, I don't know, it's like a seesaw. There's, I understand with our new DMH director, I'm thankful for his vision and how the culture is changing, where we are, our voices, consumers, are actually going to be heard and considered and, you know, have our needs met, where there's no wrong door. Any door you enter should be able to lead you to the path of victory, so to speak. So, there's a lot of hurdles still in place, but I like to help bring solutions to the table and the insight, so that we're not stumbling over ourselves unnecessarily when you're projecting some future solutions, so to speak.
So, say we, we take you up on your offer, we first have to vet you.
Sure, sure, no problem.
You good with that?
I'm, no problem. I have no problem.
You know, I don't, I don't care what kind of problems come with somebody, just so long as I'm not surprised.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
You know, so that we have a working relationship.
Exactly. You just got, you guys just don't know me, but I've, I've been around voicing my concerns in different places, different avenues, and I am connected locally, so...
And, you know, quite frankly, that's what kind of concerns me, because why has, why haven't you been brought into the system?
Well, part of it is because it's very draining and tiring, I mean mentally and physically. I do have my disabilities, and so it's always a tug of war to balance what my needs are as well as trying to advocate. And so, with transportation, I rely on the, on the bus or access services, and I'm in a very limited, I'm on general relief. And so, that can only go so far. I can't do it all, but I try to get to places where I think I can make an impact. At the time, at the time, timing is very crucial, but I can only do so much within my human capacity.
I want you to look into it, all right? And if you decide that she is able to contribute, I want her to be able to. Okay?
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I went to the first meeting of the County Homeless Consortium, and 19 people were up there in front of me, 19 people. And for two hours, they talked about some of the things we talked about tonight. And then at the end of the meeting, I said, you know, not one person mentioned the hepatitis emergencies going on in Los Angeles County. Not one person. That's the experts, that's the people that are going to come up with a solution in one of the biggest health crises affecting the homeless, and not one person mentioned it. That's sad, very sad. So, what do we do? We don't have, we don't have a homeless shelter, but we can have a temporary homeless shelter and not a community center, because it's getting cold and these people need to go somewhere, and we need to get these people, we need to inoculate them. I asked the county, and I've asked the hospital board to contact Mr. Baker and offer any assistance that they could to inoculate these people, and the only way we can get them is maybe reopen in the homeless shelter, give them a bed at night, and then we can give them medical attention before this emergency gets worse. I haven't heard anything about it from anybody, but that's where we stand. So, as a temporary measure, I asked the council to reopen the shelter temporarily, using the money from the LEAK program to open the shelter until, until the 12% gas tax kicks in and the first year of that money... in, and the first year of that money, a great deal of it is going to be used for homeless in addition to the quarter cent county tax. When we get that money, we can go back to the LEAP program, and I don't have to get up the next time and speak about leaps because I'm doing it right now. Use that money for leaps to reopen the shelter, and then when the money kicks in from the state and the county for homeless, then you can go back to the LEAP program. Because you need to have a place for these people to stand, to stay at night, you need to inoculate them, you need to take care of this hepatitis A crisis right away before it affects all of us.
Thank you, Mike. You know, just because we're not reporting to you doesn't mean people aren't working on the hepatitis issue. We are acutely aware of it, and we're putting plans in place.
Motion to adopt Resolution 17-46.
Second that. Let's vote. Thank you. Oh, that's how he got to leaps.
Right.
Okay. How did leaps get brought into this? And before, we have speaker cards. We'll hear the staff report.
Mayor Paris, city council members, the item before you would extend the leaps contract on a month-to-month basis through the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30, 2018. The money has already been appropriated. You appropriated that money within your budget when you adopted your budget in June, so there's no cost impact to this. The money's already there. For years, Lancaster has prided itself in not just having the largest sheriff's contract in the county of all the 44 contract cities, 42 contract cities, but also being innovative and providing assets and resources and support to our sheriff's department, like Northern Community and LA County, whether it's the Booster Club, leaps, 100 other things. Public safety has always been job number one. But in anything, you also have to make sure it's effective. So Lee and myself, more so Lee, meet with Todd Weber, Captain Weber, every month to see what's going on in terms of leaps, and that comes up. Every month, there is a leaps presentation before the Criminal Justice Commission, so that commission can also ensure that the public is getting their money's worth. Let me give you some stats from last month. Last month, leaps reported to the Criminal Justice Commission that it was up 309.1 hours during the month of August. It was dispatched 165 times. It logged 92 service calls where tactical field operations were supported. And it also provided observations and support in the arrest of 28 subjects. Now, those are impressive numbers. You have to take them in contacts. You can compare them to a deputy, you can compare them to any other things, but they provided support. The most important thing in my mind is, and we've all seen tragedies in our community and others, it makes officers safer. When Lancapt served last month, a warrant on a suspect that was taken into custody, it was, they were safer because there was aerial observation. And that is something that's beyond dollars and cents. This program makes sense in that regard, but it also makes sense for officer safety. We are working with, Lee and myself, with AeroV right now, to bring you a comprehensive proposal before the end of the fiscal year that will have upgraded camera equipment, no cost increase, and we're also going to put in additional protocols with Captain Weber. Myself, Lee, or Captain Weber are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a couple of comments. I'd like you to talk about several things that it's the misconception in the community about the difference between the helicopter, the availability of the helicopter, how we have 95 square miles. Adding more deputies doesn't really solve the problem of response time in that leaps with the certainty of apprehension. Can you address those?
You did a dang good job doing it. I think in particular, the cost of Aero Bureau as it currently is, and this is no aspersion on Aero Bureau because they do a good job, is very, very expensive to do a call-out on a per-hour basis for helicopter, just because of the maintenance involved and such. The difference is leaps is essentially on patrol, over our city at any time, totally controlled by the sheriff's department, who, when there's an incident, it's already in the air, and it could be simply dispatched, literally with a joystick, to look at that location. It's the certainty of having eyes on it in seconds, in less than a minute. As you mentioned, one of the things I think our community and Palmdale, too, do a remarkable job, both stations, is their time for service, their response times. 94 square miles is an incredible area, and they get to incidents quickly. But leaps helps have eyes on it before they're there, so they're safer and a suspect is safer. You can't add enough people and deputies, in particular at the cost of a deputy, to adequately cover a 94-square-mile area. The station is not just 94 square miles. The station has a square miles, Todd, I don't know if you, how many square miles?
That's about 600 square miles total.
Out of that station on Lancaster Boulevard and Sierra Highway, 600 square miles. So you need things beyond what you do in other cities in the county.
Can you talk about the certainty of apprehension with the, the time response in an emergency is about five and a half minutes? That's my understanding. And with leaps, it's 30 seconds or less with eyes on with the camera. So we have a certainty of apprehension with this particular piece of equipment that we don't have anywhere else because of the manpower that it requires. We're also the number-one contracted station in LA County, so we do our part as far as getting the sheriffs out there. However, we, they need some help, and that help is the equipment as far as leaps.
That's very well said. One of the things on the certainty of apprehension goes towards car chases, as an example. A lot of times, it's more dangerous to chase someone in a car with radio cars than it is just to let them go and catch them. A lot of times, they get away that way. In Lancaster, they get away less because if you have leaps on it, you just follow the car with the camera, and you know where they're going. You don't have to follow it with a radio car and endanger the public. That's one example of certainty of apprehension. There's been other examples where, in a chase in a neighborhood at night, where people, suspect, will jump over walls to try to get out because it's difficult.
Multiple walls.
Multiple walls. If you have an area, you can't jump over enough walls that leaps won't find you because it'll always find you. We will be showing at the next Criminal Justice Commission a video that we have of one of those incidents. So yeah, it's multiple benefits in that regard.
And I've also heard from people that it's, and I know it not to be true because I've visited the leaps, but the person that's flying the plane does not get to see what they're looking at or direct the camera at, anything. It flies under coordinates. That's directed from the ground.
That is correct, and then it will go based on directions to the ground. It has a pre-established route, and then when it's dispatched from the station, it then goes on-site and on-scene to where it's directed.
Thank you.
You know, the certainty of apprehension would be improved dramatically if we armed it.
You know, we can ask for that as we're negotiating.
Just a thought.
If I may, something that gets left out a lot, you know, we think about arrests and apprehension and all that kind of stuff and the safety towards deputies, which is all accurate. But something I really didn't think about as I was preparing for this and looking at some of the video, was how you could use it in other public safety measures. Like, for instance, if you had a fire at some type of facility that had toxic smoke, or you concerned with toxic smoke, you could have leaps above there flying around, and both us and fire could have real-time intelligence showing where that smoke plume is going to aid in evacuations and start planning further for other community emergency issues, which often gets forgotten when you think about the applications for that platform.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council.
Hi.
I'm against this program with this vehicle because, number one, I worked 42 years for an aerospace firm. This was not invented here. We've been in use since 1960 with the same type of camera. We fly at a higher altitude. It's the United States government's been utilizing it all over the world. But the problem I have with here is law enforcement personnel are a deterrent, first of all. If you see a cop car out there or a sheriff's vehicle, you're not going to speed, you're not going to run at red light, you're not going to endanger somebody else. That's the first thing with law enforcement. The other thing is, these people cover all the way out to Lake LA, all the way over to Lake Hughes. They can't cover that in a car. But they can cover it a whole lot faster in an aircraft, and that is what we use the helicopter for. That helicopter is based right over there on 10th Street by the fire department. It can be in the air in a whole lot less time than that little single-engine aircraft, which passes over my business every night at 7:30, and the same path makes a left-hand turn at probably 10th Street East and goes over that way. So it's following the same path every night. They're not going to catch anybody. They're not a deterrent. They're not going to be able to arrest anybody. The other problem we have is, we don't have enough personnel in the sheriff's department. I've talked to some sheriff's deputies when I've had to call them and find out, they all say about the same thing. They're about 40 members short to be able to cover the large area that they do cover. This is the largest area for the sheriff in Los Angeles County, is it not?
I don't know if it's the largest in Palmdale, might have a bigger county area, but if we're not the largest, we're right up there.
Okay. So they are out there, but they can't do it as expedient as a helicopter. That's a flight aircraft that you're talking about, and it does not do the job you're saying as well as a helicopter. That helicopter can be in the air a lot quicker, and it's a lot more expedient. That thing can't go below, for the FAA, below 2,500 feet. So it can't get into areas that the helicopter can. And the other thing about the helicopter, if you're out in traffic and you see that helicopter circling, you stay out of that area because the cops need all the help they can get, and they don't need you in the way.
Thank you.
Good evening, again. I went to the first meeting of the County Homeless Consortium, and 19 people were up there in front of me, 19 people. And for two hours, they talked about some of the things we talked about tonight. And then at the end of the meeting, I said, you know, not one person mentioned the hepatitis emergencies going on in Los Angeles County. Not one person. That's the experts. That's the people that are going to come up with a solution in one of the biggest health crises affecting the homeless, and not one person mentioned it. That's sad. Very sad. So what do we do? We don't have, we don't have a homeless shelter, but we can have a temporary homeless shelter and not a community center because it's getting cold and these people need to go somewhere. And we need to get these people, we need to inoculate them. I asked the county, and I've asked the hospital board, to contact Mr. Baker and offer any assistance that they could to inoculate these people. And the only way we can get them is maybe reopen in the homeless shelter, give them a bed at night, and then we can give them medical attention before this emergency gets worse. I haven't heard anything about it from anybody, but that's where we stand. So as a temporary measure, I asked the council to reopen the shelter temporarily, using the money from the LEAP program to open the shelter until, until the 12% gas tax kicks in, and the first year of that money, a great deal of it is going to be used for homeless in addition to the quarter cent county tax. When we get that money, we can go back to the LEAP program, and I don't have to get up the next time and speak about leaps because I'm doing it right now. Use that money for leaps to reopen the shelter, and then when the money kicks in from the state and the county for homeless, then you can go back to the LEAP program. Because you need to have a place for these people to stand, to stay at night, you need to inoculate them, you need to take care of this hepatitis A crisis right away before it affects all of us.
Thank you, Mike. You know, just because we're not reporting to you doesn't mean people aren't working on the hepatitis issue. We are acutely aware of it, and we're putting plans in place.
Motion to adopt Resolution 17-46.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Council reports. Councilmember Andrew Wood Jacobs, you're the star of the show tonight. There you go.
So we had a meeting at ABTA this morning, and we were, we received a discretionary grant for a low and no emission grant for about $703,000. There were approximately 16 requests from the state of California, and there were only three that were actually approved. So that was something that was really good for ABTA and the city of Lancaster.
So what did we get the grants for?
We got the grants for the electric buses.
Did you speak on leaps? Who didn't get called in?
What up?
Is it right there?
What do you want?
Leaps? Nope. Leaps four?
Did we leave somebody else?
Yeah, we did.
Who?
Uh, where'd it go?
Tom Miller.
Tom Miller.
I did, Tom. I'm sorry. You know, Marvin, he confuses me so much. It's, it's, come on down. Yeah, come on down.
Thank you for allowing me to talk.
I'm sorry.
I'm Tom Miller, and I live in the flight path of this thing that goes around and around and around. And I see it coming by 13 to 15 minutes like clockwork. And if you get out there in the morning or in the evening when it's a little quieter, you just hear this. There it goes again. There it goes again. And it's relentless. I don't know if this exhaust system is going out on it or what, but it's, it's ongoing and relentless. And it's, besides my Kell Water bill, it's one of the things that really make it tough to live in Lancaster because I'm just hearing that, I'm in the flight path. If they just go a little bit farther out, or give me a break here a little bit, it'd sure be kind of nice. But I was also going to say, isn't that, based on what I read, it's about 90 grand a month? Is that what that?
Three thousand dollars a month.
That is a lot of money. A million dollars a year for that thing to fly over my head? I think, I'm with the other gentleman about maybe looking at more useful having the helicopter, get a little more time on the helicopter than that. And then also, how many other cities have this kind of a program, the leaps program, where there's a plane just flying over? It kind of says, is it that bad in this Antelope Valley that we need to have a plane flying overhead just waiting for crime to happen? When I've talked to other people about it, they go, man, is it that bad out there? And it's kind of a bad impression to think that our community needs to have a plane flying over our head just waiting for a crime to happen, in my opinion. But mainly, I just want to say, I know it's been approved, and I'm glad it's month-to-month because if you could find a different pattern or try something different once in a while, or this, some of us just don't have to keep putting up with it, that would be kind of nice, too. And maybe get the exhaust fixed on the thing.
It's actually the propeller. There's nothing we can do about that. The, you know, people don't understand that a helicopter is exponentially more expensive. is because it is so inexpensive compared to operating a helicopter.
I'm sure it is.
Now, now, let me finish, let me, I'm trying to address all of your concerns here. It does have a designated flight plan because it doesn't need to move around. It doesn't need to change that. It's in a ra, it's in a race court, you know, a horse race-type, what do you call it? A track, a horse track oval, that it, that it flies because you direct the camera, you don't direct the airplane. The airplane doesn't have to be directed, for the most part, unless you need to get closer into something. Now, I could see where that could be irritating if it gets directly over you, and so perhaps we will look at altering the flight plan so it, it fluctuates. We, we could do that.
Yeah, I live over in the Desert Rose kind of area, but I can just see that thing.
Yeah, so can I. It makes me feel good because I know it's up there.
Wow.
You know, I mean, someday, someday, God forbid, you could be the person that they're breaking into the, your house, and you call. If you call when the plane's up, they can tell you which door to get out of the house from. They can do all kinds of things that they couldn't do while that five minutes transpired, from the time you called to the time the officer gets there. It gives an element of, of safety to the citizen that they didn't have before. And, you know, I'll compare our crime rates to anybody's, compared to what they were when we, when this council came on, to what they are now. And the plane had a little bit to do with that.
I, I'm sure there's some positive to it, but at the same time, it's been years of just annoyance.
I, I can understand that. That's easily fixed. I, I think we can.
So.
We will look at and work with Air of You. Lee will take that down, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
I'd like to revote on NB four, so we don't have to.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve NB four.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's approved, and it's unanimous.
Angela was given a report on.
That's right. Before you were so rudely interrupted.
What I'm saying is that we received a discretionary grant for no low emissions, and it was for approximately seven-hundred-and-three-thousand. There were sixteen people from Ca, the state of California that actually requested funds, and we were one of the three that actually received. We also gave a certificate of recognition for a, a operator today from the city of Lancaster for being one of the first to operate the sixteen-foot adriculation bus, uh, in sixty, excuse me. And with that, she was, uh, it actually happened on September first, and that was very exciting for her. She's been a longtime employee, so it was great.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I would like to, Mayor Paris. Last meeting, we talked about preparation for the earthquake. So I have a little, I mean, we, we have gathering all the information, but the preliminary thing we came, that came up, actually, the good thing was, I, I was approached by a lot of citizens. They wanted to help, and they wanted to be involved in this, and so they can help other citizens of Lancaster. And, um, so I came up with a couple of things that we need to do preliminary, that we need to find out which stores they sell those kits for locally, or, and then we need to let people know, and also, um, on the farmer's market, and a couple of days, and every month, we should have at the fairground, we can sell those, we announce to our citizens, like, we're going to sell those, um, those kits. So they, it'll be more accessible to them, so they can, so we are working on that.
Earthquake emergency kits, so we have food and inner water, all the stuff you need.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that, that's, but next probably meeting, we'll have more information about that. And the second, um, I, I got to attend yesterday LA's mayor's quarterly meeting. I had represented you. So it was pretty nice to be there. So they talked about housing, transportation, public safety. And the stuff I really liked, it was Olympic twenty-twenty-eight. So they talked about, Mayor Grisari talked about that, and what I picked up on that, it's going to be so much, uh, work, jobs opening in next, next, those, those years, that is going to benefit a lot of people. But one thing I wanted to, I was talking to Mark on the way here. Also, Mayor Grisari announced that if any city wanted to have those, you know, certain games, so I was thinking about soccer, we have a big soccer field, so we can put our, you know, our name in there. So, uh.
That is genius. Absolutely, the soccer should be.
So they're accepting, and they're, they're working on it, so we should do that.
No, you should do that.
Okay, well, I mean.
You've got a whole staff to help you.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that'll be a great idea.
We've got the best soccer fields in the, in the country.
Yeah.
Of course we should be doing that.
Yeah, it was all about Amazon, but like, they talked, but I really liked that part. I think we can.
You don't think they'll make me play on the Olympic team, do you? I don't need to worry about that? Okay.
Well, there's so many places to go now.
I'll refrain.
All right, all right.
I have something. Last Friday, we had a, uh, a hallmark time at AV High School. They finally beat Palmdale. And, um, Mr. Mann was nominated and became a Hall of Fame member at the AV High School. So I want to congratulate him.
Marvin actually misspoke. In the honor of the inductees, uh, AV beat Palmdale for the second year in a row, so they were honoring us, so that's the reason why the Palmdale.
Absolutely.
They just got beat.
Absolutely true.
Second year in a row.
They're two and eighteen against Palmdale now.
Marvin is so selective.
We're in Lancaster, and AV is a Lancaster school.
That's why Marvin gets confused sometimes, so that's okay.
Donna Tremere, do you have something to tell us about the homeless?
A couple of things I'd like to speak to. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would like to, um, I know everybody's anxious and want to give everyone the word. I can't, we're in the final stages of identifying the location for the temporary winter shelter. We're in great hopes that we will have that information and that location to be announced in a motion by the supervisor by next week, hopefully, very soon. So I wanted to report that. Also, I'd like to speak to, um, Mr. Reeves' concerns about the hep A, because we have been just recently briefed by the Department of Public Health on, um, their, um, uh, work in getting the word out with outreach teams that they're putting together to work with the local service providers to specifically address the homeless populations, as well as we have received information on free clinics where vaccinations be, can be given, and you can go to the DPH website and check pharmacies by zip code and find out what pharmacies are also giving the, um, free hep A vaccinations. So any county clinic is giving that. I have information that was just sent to me, and we are getting ready to disseminate that as, as widespread as we can. So if anybody would like that information, I can provide it to anyone. And, um, we're working well with the city and happy to be working on the new homeless commission and anything else that we can do for you. You have a question?
Oh, that's a great idea.
What's that?
They were texting me in violation of the Brown Act. I might want to point that out. Of course it's in violation of the Brown Act. You're supposed to just actually say it, not send me a text while I'm, I mean, I'm a little horrified, actually, Mr. Bozignan, that you would do such a thing.
I'm aghast.
I'm wondering if we should have you with the Fire and Sheriff's Department as, you know, part of the group at the meetings. If that's something you would like, you're, you're invited to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Because I, I, I think it's really important that we work closer together with the county, and I think the visual's important, too.
All right.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
And if at any time they don't treat you appropriately, you just let me know.
And let me tell you, they treat me so appropriately.
I can only imagine.
Great partners. Yeah.
Great.
Good.
Wait, wait your turn.
Okay, yeah, I know. Well, I get that, too. Trust me. All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. What is the recommendation, by the way? Should people be getting a hep, hep A vaccination, or only if they're in a, an exposed situation? Why don't you have Public Health send a, let us know so we can put it on the website?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The, the other thing we want Public Health to deal with is if Rocket Man sends a nuke our way, what do we do? I'm serious.
All right.
Okay? I mean, there, it, it's unlikely it's going, it's, it'll only be one, but if one goes off, what should people be thinking about? Okay? Good. Thank you.
Mark first.
Why don't you just text me? What do you want?
I was just informed by the city attorney, it's not a violation for me to text, it's a violation for you guys.
You were texting us.
That's not a violation, apparently.
Uh-oh.
Providing information to council members is not a violation. Responding back would be.
Over three of them. And that didn't, and that did not take place.
There we go.
So the mayor was wrong.
That's hard to believe.
Again.
Okay, George B.
No. City manager first.
Oh, city manager first.
Oh, and I got to have the city clerk do her shtick, yeah.
Wait on. Your announcements.
The, um, three things. One, I'd like to thank Pastor Meadows for recognizing our staff and the roadwork we're doing. They're really trying very hard. We have a lot of roadwork going on. People will be noticing, for example, that we're doing road diets on Lancaster Boulevard from Tenth Street going west, um, and on, I mean, on Lancaster Boulevard also going east from about Sierra Highway to, through Twenty-seventh. We're being very sensitive to the uses there, trying to get in and out in front of people's houses or churches very quickly. So you'll see that. Number two, we have several events coming up. We have Streets of Lancaster. We have, this weekend, we have Park in the Park before the next council meeting. I, the most, one of the most exciting we have, though, is the expansion of BYD, and sort of a groundbreaking. I don't know if the mayor wants to mention our meeting today or not, our tour over there. That was quite exciting. Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, we, we had a councilman from, uh, Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles come, and Paul Corretts. And in the course of the discussion, it was, we're, we're developing a coalition of councilmen from Los Angeles City and us, and we're probably going to do another joint trip to China with the idea of doing a, a collective invitation for things that are appropriately in Lancaster and things that should be in LA. Because like BYD, their office is in LA. It works that way. But we've never had this level of, of coordinated effort with, with the city of Los Angeles before. And so I'm looking forward to it. And there, there isn't, I mean, they're being sincere. They want to know how we've done our green initiatives, and because we're, nobody's doing it as profitably as we are. We're, we actually are generating a huge amount of income for the city rather than an outlay of in, of income. So it's exciting times.
And we have a couple of videos, but to echo that, it's heady stuff when the city of LA is genuinely asking, "How do you do it?", to Lancaster. I didn't know that I'd see that day in my career. So thank you all to the council for taking chances on a lot of things that are, people are noticing. We do have two videos. The first one is a opening of a new business on the Boulevard. It's a very odd title, but you'll see it from the vibe, it's gasoline and coffee.
How does it feel right now?
It feels great, man. I feel, I feel like a million bucks.
Whose idea was it?
I've been kicking around the gasoline and coffee idea for quite some time. My wife actually came up with them, with the name, because I, I build bikes on the side. And of course, gasoline fuels motorbikes and also, uh, vintage cars and such, you know, and, and, and coffee fuels us, and I'm, I'm a coffee lover, so why not put the two together? My friend Ray Laney, and he partners with this, and so, and this is how it became, a dream became a reality.
You can get any type of lattes, you can get Frappuccinos, you can get chai tea. If you don't like warm coffee, you can get a nitro brew coffee. You can get that with a float with ice cream. We call our coffee ninety-one octane, eighty-nine, just like the gas, so you have your, you know, your darker roast, you have your lighter roast.
You have one called Jetfield?
No, no, but we should come up with that, right? Diesel.
How's it feel to be in the middle of the Boulevard?
Feels amazing. There's just a chemistry here, you know, and there's a vibe going on, you know, and, and we, we want to contribute to the Boulevard and also to the city of Lancaster, do some charity stuff for people, and, and also to bring a, a good atmosphere for the younger crowd to come by, hang out, you know, some gearheads, whatever, you know, and drink some coffee and have a good time.
Pretty cool place. People should visit it. It's a very nice vibe. Uh, the second video, and last video, is regarding the AV AQMD. Is it the air award to Joe Walker? The air award to Joe Walker, and pretty amazing kids in the West Side School District.
The Stand By Me app was created by the students at our school, Joe Walker Middle School. It was to address the one in six kids that we found were being absent on an ongoing basis due to asthma symptoms. We were able to use data from the AQMD here in Antelope Valley and realize that we could provide maybe a solution to that issue. The statistics would let the kids know if they were having issues. It would also monitor their own symptoms and let them know why it's not a major deal to go get help before it becomes an emergency room issue.
Are the kids and parents thankful?
Oh, of course. It's been a great project for the kids, and the best part of it is being on my side, watching this brain trust evolve, if you will, out of twelve and thirteen-year-olds.
Wow, asthma's a huge problem out here.
It is a huge problem. It, it has been, and this is one of the reasons why we separated from South Coast, because all of our pollution actually comes from South Coast or from the San Joaquin Valley. So it pollutes down, we do not have many polluters, actual polluters, here in the Antelope Valley. It comes from South Coast and the San Joaquin Valley.
That's quite an app these kids developed.
Oh, it's, it's tremendous. West Side School District has always been, uh, uh, doing innovative things, but that app that they have is, uh, is just geniuses. It makes you proud of the students that are coming out.
Thank you. Good production, too. Good job, Luke.
Mark, you want to talk about the senior center grand opening tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, we have a groundbreaking, I'm sorry, Fran. Were you going to talk about that? We can let Fran talk about that. It's a groundbreaking tomorrow. Unless you'd like me to, sir.
Which one do you want, Fran? I think both of you should do it.
The groundbreaking tomorrow is a culmination of a lot of work by our staff, LA County staff, the community, people like Fran who have demanded that that senior center expand and serve our community more. Thank you to the council for letting us get involved, because our staff being involved probably got it six months to a year sooner. We took over the design aspects and such, and we're essentially the middle, middleman between the county and the contractors and such. There'll be a groundbreaking tomorrow, and in a few short months, you'll see it expanded by over three thousand square feet. There will be a big multipurpose room, and the reason that's so important is because right now, when you go in for one program, and you have to wait in the hallway as they flip the room over, they have exactly one room. This will allow them to do different programs at different times, and you won't see people waiting in the hallway. So it's going to be a tremendous benefit to this community.
Thank you. Anything else? City clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Fran? You're up.
Good evening again. Thank you very much for the commission, your consideration of me. But I also was going to talk on the groundbreaking for tomorrow. As you know, I was an advocate to get it done. And I'm inviting everybody to come tomorrow to the senior center, which is at 777 Jackman Street in Lancaster, the Lancaster Senior Center. It's been a long time coming. With your help and the county's help, it's a reality, and everybody's happy about it. Also, real quick, wanted to mention, um, Mr. Molly, as far as the earthquake preparedness program you were talking about, they did have packages at Sam's Club and Walmart, and they have it for-
They also have it in Winco as well.
In Winco, yeah. So I just thought I'd give you that heads up on what I know and what I've come across. I also wanted to let you know, I also belong to the Antelope Valley Partners for Health. They've asked me to join, and I'm working with them now. Also, I'm working with the service area for advisory committee, which is with Mental Health Department. And I'm also helping your deputy mayor, Mr. Daryl, or Pastor Daryl Doris, with your homeless situation that you're working on. And let's see what else. I guess that's about it, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless you all.
Fran, you want to talk about the change in access that you-
Oh, yes. Another thing. I had, I had got ahold of ABTA because we were having troubles with the seniors and for disabled people. When we go to the fair, where access drops us off and picks us up. It usually drops us off and picks us up at the, what I call the red building, which is your turf, I believe it's called the turf building. But we have encountered, and I have personally encountered, where at the end of a venue, they close up all the gates, and you're locked in. It happened to me, and luckily, there was one maintenance man at the time, and he stayed with me till access came to pick me up. But, so, I, uh, we talked about it last week. We had a meeting, while I was in a meeting with ABTA, with Kelvis and Access, and they have agreed to drop us off and pick us up when it's a large venue, like when the senior center, I mean, the senior of the year comes in, uh, in October the 19th, they're going to be dropping us off at Gate 7 on Avenue G, which is a back end, which is a lot closer. But in regular venues, when there's not as much traffic or parking in the front, they're going to be dropping us off in the front, kind of north of the Huntington Hunter Building, which is really a tremendous help to all our people. And then thank you to ABTA because they stepped up really quick when I spoke, because they were had, they were supposed, access was supposed to take care of this about over a month and a half ago. And we had, something happened, we had a program about two weeks ago, and they didn't do it. So I got on the phone and it got done, and I thank you.
Thank you. Torino Knuckleburger?
First, I'm gonna start by saying that I am currently homeless, and that the city of Lancaster has been helping me and my family, and that what I'll be speaking about today caused my homelessness. And I want to thank you for the work that you guys have been doing. My name is Toriano Knuckleburger, and my daughter's name is Messiah Browning. Two weeks ago, I came in here and informed you of the crimes involving the people who worked in the city of Lancaster local government. I asked you to open an investigation into Shirley Black and Maya Rodriguez, into their involvement into my eight-year-old daughter, at the time, eight-year-old daughter's kidnapping and sexual assault. You replied with one word: "No." Now, I know the rules of the council chamber says that you cannot act, but you were to refer this situation to the proper channels, and your irritated answer of the answer "No" was inadequate. I want to know, sir, what gives you the right, just because you have a certain job, not to do that job? What kind of mayor are you? Is it because you are also involved in this case? Like I said two weeks ago, I have a letter with a letterhead of your letterhead and your signature on it, sir, referring me to John Nolan and Roy Huntsman to sue your city. I have the paperwork with your letterhead on it and your signature, sir. The attorney that you, the attorneys that you referred me to, John Nolan and Roy Huntsman, sabotaged my case, and then I was illegally thrown in prison after. They were also members of this, were they members of the Santa Clarita Attorneys Association, which also you head up or are a member of? I'm not sure exactly. We're gonna hash this out right here, then. I'm gonna be here every first Monday, every second Tuesday, every third Thursday, whenever you're here, sir, and the cameras are here, I'm gonna be here talking about my daughter's kidnapping and sexual assault. I'm gonna connect my name to your name. So every time they mention your name, they're gonna mention my name, and then my daughter will not be covered up. It will not be covered up. I have done two TV shows already about my daughter's taking. All I want is an investigation into the paperwork that I have, that my daughter was kidnapped and sexually assaulted, and custody was given to the kidnapper by this city. That's the only thing that I'm looking for, and compensation. I know you can't, you don't have the power to bring my daughter back, but we can do an investigation, and there can be compensation, and that's all that I'm looking for, sir. Thank you. I just want to record everybody here that you guys know. Thank you.
George Beatty?
Mayor, city council members, I commend all of you. You all have jobs that I would not want.
There's some downsides to it.
Yeah, I tell you. Anyway, there's a PVC tubing stand over at the East Side Pool that the bottom sections are falling apart due to the being movement. And I want permission from you, because I've asked other people, all you gotta go through the contract bit, I don't want no contract. I'll fix it and repair it for nothing. It ain't 10, 15 bucks tubing and my time. I just want your permission to fix it. It's starting to crack and break apart.
You can fix it.
Pardon me?
You can fix it.
Okay.
And if they get in the way, you just tell them the mayor said you could fix it.
All right. Thank you very much. You all have a blessed day.
Why can't he fix it?
Well-
What?
There's, there is the con, there is a process. You have to go through the audit, but if he trips and breaks his leg, then we're gonna be paying for that, too.
Then we'll pay for it.
I couldn't break my leg swimming in the pool. What makes the difference?
How about if we fix it?
And this is government at work.
Mark, why don't you just let him supervise?
Like I said, you all have jobs that I don't want.
George, if you go over there and it's fixed, you don't have to fix it. If it's not?
Is that somebody who's gonna be fixing it already?
Hey. Thanks, George. Either way, you got it fixed.
Yeah.
Now they're motivated. Dwayne Spolstra? Did they not take care of that problem? They didn't take care of the problem. Where's the director of public safety?
I can tell you, we've been there every day dealing with that area as it relates. We even removed one individual that was in a little bivouac setting that was south of there. But the idea that we can only hold them for a certain period of time, there's been citations issued in the area for nuisance issues and all kinds of things, shopping carts. At the same time, it's one of many issues that we're dealing with and addressing.
All of the trash, all of the fecally contaminated environment area is still there, and there are probably two additional people within 50 feet of my front door in a bivouac situation, if that's the correct term. And children walk past my building on their way to school. And that fecally contaminated environment and the hepatitis A, B, and other things that were discussed down in San Diego and what LA County is dealing with is within, well, it's within 12 feet of my building. And I don't think it's appropriate, and I think that it can be cleaned up with the prison crew that comes by or the city crew. I was told by a wise man that when you've won to be quiet-
Apparently you didn't win, huh?
And I think the same man would say, "You may have won a judgment, but you have, now you have to collect." And so that probably is equally, may be equally difficult. But I think it's a situation within a mile of this room that should be taken care of. That's my only thing.
I'm obviously mostly concerned about the fecal matter that, and any children that are exposed to that. That, that's a major priority of keeping that area cleaned up in regards to that. And I recognize the frustrations of what do you do with the homeless population that are using doorways for bathrooms? Well, if we have to go out there every morning, I don't want kids being exposed to this.
They cut, they cut through the field because from Yucca to get to, over the tracks, you go through the field. And to and from school, I see them all day long. Well, not all day long, outside of school hours. But it's, it's, if people are, if, if there's, if it's been addressed, it's, it repeats itself within the next hour or something because I, I have, all of the trash is still up against my building, and I haven't seen any of that moved. So, anyway, enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening.
Good evening.
You know, before I begin, I want to say that I don't intend to minimize anybody's suffering or the situations that they experience because no one knows what other people go through. But I was in an uncharitable mood the other day having a conversation, and I said, "I don't want to listen to any nonsense or negativity." And the person I was talking to said, "Why do you go to city council meetings?" And, you know, it depends on what side you're sitting on. And mostly, what I want to share with you tonight is my gratitude for what you do because people think that you become a monolith when you sit there, and you people have feelings and emotions like everyone else, and these things wear on you, and our world is in such trouble. And I just want you to know that I take heart from what I hear in this city. We do great things, and we push on, and there are problems. I don't deny that, but we work at this in a way that I've never seen any other community do, and it, it matters to me. So thank you for everything you do. I just want you to know how much I appreciate it.
Thank you. Wendy? Come on down. It's Cabell, right? Cabell, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks again for allowing me to speak to you all. And I would like to just fill in some gaps for clarity, part of my background, how I came up here. This occurred in Los Angeles, city of Los Angeles, and it was 2007 that I moved up here. So, and I do believe it was a divine appointment because I had no idea I would end up here. But be it as it may, as I commit myself to the Lord in service, I'm being available wherever He needs me. And so I feel that this is the area of my mission at this time. I would like to propose a homeless lived advisory group for Lancaster City to give an official voice for those of us who are or have experienced homelessness. And the reason I bring this up is because I also shared with the board of supervisors earlier this morning, or this afternoon, that SPAL 1 is not represented on their, on LOSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, lived homeless advisory group. So that's just something I'd like to update you on. And also- Okay. And then I was wondering, and to the comments I've heard about the outreach engagement for those homeless dealing with the hep- hepatitis A, I wanted to make sure that the libraries are being covered, if anyone is going to be assigned to check in in the libraries as well, because that is a place where they do feel comfortable. And then I got an idea listening to the gentleman before me. How about having the same LOSA, joint powers of authority between the city and the county of Los Angeles, include in its outreach and engagement activities a way to encourage those with hygiene concerns to use the portable showers and porta-potties, whatever. I understand Love on Purpose is part of the health neighborhood that we have out here, and they've been able to, with the help of others, to attain portable showers. And so that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of the speaker cards. I don't have any announcements. Any comments from the city council before we close?
Todd, would you like to talk about the October 5th date? What's going to take place with the remembrance of Steve Owens?
Sure. Well, in addition to the dedication of the highway sign at Steve Owen Park, which I believe is, is it 11, 11 o'clock or?
11.
11 o'clock. They'll be dedicating the highway sign that's gonna be on the portion of highway dedicated in Sergeant Owen's name, they'll be dedicating that at the park, 11 o'clock. That was actually sponsored, I think the, the legislation was sponsored by, by Popa, which is the, one of our unions, and actually the city's partnered with them, and they're gonna have this big event, which would be really nice. And then the deputies themselves are gonna be standing vigil out by the location where Sergeant Owen was killed for 24 hours from midnight. I guess it'd be midnight the 4th, midnight the 5th. They'll be out there two or three at a time in Class A uniforms, on their own time, doing that, just as a, the one-year anniversary vigil, vigil for that. So if you see them out there, they'll be out and about, and that's, like I said, they're, they're not on duty, that's, that's their time, that they're donating to be out there. So we'll see them out there.
Thank you.
It's hard to believe it's already been a year. Okay, anything else?
There is something that's on my mind is, as I was listening to Ms. McDonald speak earlier. I've had the opportunity to speak with several people that are in the restaurant business that discuss having food that is left over, that they're unable to give away due to possibly being sued. I guess my question is, is that is it possible for us to create an ordinance and maybe have the person that would be receiving the food to sign off a disclaimer of some sort so that we're able to actually feed people that are hungry?
Well, I can give you a legal opinion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, is you could do a waiver of liability that is marginally effective, but there's ways around it. The, uh, it really is a state initiative we'd have to deal with if we're talking about fresh, you know, open food. Because the, the likelihood of contamination is great. It's not, might happen, it's will happen. You know, that, that's how that works. The extent of the injury that, that causes, you know, is anybody's gas, but there are substantial hurdles to overcome that would require some type of state legislation to do so, and it would have zero chance of passing, is my view of it. I really don't know how to, how to deal with that. Because it's not, I mean, it's not just the simple act of giving food to somebody. not, I mean, it's not just the simple act of giving food to somebody. You know, we're actually transporting it now, we're collecting it. It's a disaster waiting to happen from a pathogen point of view. And I know a lot of people have looked at that, but as soon as you open those packages up, you've got a very short window before pathogens start to grow. And especially if, you know, if it's warm.
I see your point. I see your point.
But it's regrettable, you know, I totally get it. But I don't, I don't know that those are bad laws. The upside of this is, is we are now, for the first time, in a position with the funding to be able to have an effective response that I think we will have if we get the right people managing it. And that's, that's the rub, is we have to be very selective as to who we allow under the city of Lancaster to deal with this. Wouldn't you say that's accurate, Donna? I'm assuming we're all in agreement, are we?
I would have to get county council, you know, involved in that, of course, if you were doing anything like that. But I definitely see the liability issue, of course.
No, no, I'm asking about our plans for the homeless, with, working with the county and all.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought you were talking about the food specifically.
It's one of those things that's hard to accept, you know, we are throwing away tons of food. But there's no other option. Okay?
Can you speak on that, please?
No, I'm sorry, public comment's closed. This is just the time for the council to speak. You can speak next week if you want.
No, I just wanted to say something.
No, you can't. Thank you. All right. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 10, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Marvin will be fielding the meeting and we will be in Denver promoting the city to the environmentally friendly groups.
You're not going to Denver with Mark?
Well, it's probably a safe bet I'm not going with Mark, but I'm going to meet him there.
How much does a luggage ticket cost, Mark?
No, it sounds worse than it, it sounds worse than it is. I mean, I've invited him to fly with me and there's laws that make him have to refuse. It's not...
And for the record, the mayor does pay his own way, not the city.
Okay. Carol, I'm coming home. Am I coming home? Where's Myra? Is her party over? Oh, then I can't come home. My wife is having a naked ladies' party. You all know what a naked ladies' party is, you dirty-minded people. It's where everybody gets together and they, the clothes they're no longer wearing, right, that are hanging in their closet for a year, they trade them. They make use of them. Oh, really? Did you really think my wa... I am horrified. But that's what she's doing. She's having a naked ladies' party and she told me to stay away. So when can I go home? So there's a lot of stuff being donated tonight. Okay, great. Thank you. Let's go home.